Okay, if we could call this meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board, December fifteenth to order. I would like to welcome all our guests. And if we can have an opening prayer. Jason Behrendt.
Sorry, it's me today. Thank you very much. In this third week of Advent, the week marked, the week of joy marked by the pink candle, we gather in prayer. Please respond to each part of the prayer with the words, "Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world."
Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world.
If you'll join me now, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. The joy of discovery, that moment when hope and expectation were gloriously met by the illumination of one bright star.
Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world.
We cannot imagine what words were spoken by visitors, or if first impressions left them somewhat confused. Messiah, Savior, a King, born in the berrys of palaces, yet they saw and fell down on their knees in adoration. Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world. Lord, they saw you and knew whom they had met. As we meet around crib, candle, or Advent wreath, draw us into that stable in our imagination. Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world. In the quiet moments of prayer this Christmas, that brief oasis from the busyness of the world bring us, bring alive to us, the smell of hay, the sound of the animals, the cry of a baby. Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world. Draw us close to our Savior, Messiah, and King as we bring not gold, mirror, or frankincense, but the life, the gift of our lives, the only offering we can bring. Jesus, true joy, be born in us, be born in our world. Amen.
Thank you, Joel. For your information, this meeting will be audio and video recorded and can be found on our YouTube channel of the board. There are no motions adopted in camera. And can we have an approval of the agenda? I do have one item to add, sorry, first. It's an information item, and it will be ten point nine, and it's just going to be in regards to a letter to Halton Regional Health Department. Now may we have approval of the agenda, Paul? And seconder, Helena, all in favor? Thank you. Declaration of conflict of interest, seeing none. We can now move on to the exciting part of our evening, which is the presentation, the winners of the Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Art Contest. levels deep. Let students and teachers know those fundamental labels, that the manufacturers are seeing themselves. And finally, the request that you are basing this decision on Safety Code Six. We would appeal to you to invest a little bit of time to understand how shaky that foundation is that you're basing this decision on, because it is out of date. The science is horrible. The, we had an expert go in and, who's a world-renowned expert on the process of reviewing scientific literature, and he said he gave Health Canada an F on their analysis and process for reviewing the scientific literature. So again, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity, so close to Christmas, to, to share our views. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. We'll respond to the delegation later on under action item 8.1. Thank you.
Okay.
If we can move on now to minutes, approval of the minutes, minutes of the regular board meeting of number, November 18th, and they're in your package. You have a mover? So we excuse the three new trustees. Moved by Paul Sec-
Excuse me. Excuse me, could we, I didn't hear what we were talking about.
Uh, the three, the three trustees, the newly elected trustees were not here for the November 18th meeting, so they can't, uh-
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. So Paul moved for approval of the minutes of November 18th. Do I have a seconder? Arlene? All in favor? That's unanimous. Business arising from previous meetings. You have a summary of outstanding items from previous meetings, 7.1. Are there any questions? We can move to the action items now, and we're at the response to the delegation. For clarification purposes only, do trustees have any questions of Mr. Clegg? Trustee Carabella.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just wondering, all our, I'd like to have an update of all our schools. Do they all, the elementary schools have Wi-Fi and the secondary?
Yes, they do. Or, yeah.
And what is involved in, physically in the classroom that allows the Wi-Fi to travel around?
I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Krips, can you answer that question, please? Oh, okay. Sorry, these questions are for clarification from Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg, for coming this evening. I'm just curious, when you say you've spoken to government bodies, et cetera, et cetera, do you have documented correspondence with them, where you've gotten answers? I'm just, I'm just curious for how long and to what extent you've been, I'm assuming, lobbying them?
Well, we've been, it's been an effort over two years. I can share with you the correspondence that we've sent to the minister. I can't share with you any correspondence from the minister, because there hasn't been any. So I'd be glad to, should I email that to Helen, or, I don't know, whatever, I can email the, most recently, there was a letter that we sent to the minister on July 15th, when the public consultation was closed, and we laid out our five issues, most of which I reviewed with you, concerns on the process. And we've met and presented, so I don't know, do you want the presentations that we made to her staff as well? Because we did that as well. There's four or five staff members that we've made presentations to. But I think the best one is that letter, the one letter that's fairly short, three pages long, with two or three attachments that we sent to Minister Ambrose. Okay, I will, I will send that, send that through.
Joel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, you mentioned one of the solutions was to, for teachers to turn on and off the Wi-Fi when they're not using it. But for a high school, from my understanding, is that we only have one Wi-Fi network for our whole school?
Right.
And different teachers need it at different points. So how would we address that?
I, I don't know, and in fact, Ellen and I were just talking about that. What I have learned in my career, though, is that, right, is, the technology may not be able to do it, but if you went to the manufacturers and said, we would like the ability to have the teachers turn off the Wi-Fi in their classroom. So the idea is to have the teacher turn it off in that, in that room, specifically in their classroom, because their, because their lesson timing will be different than another teacher. And so, there's routers in each classroom, probably at least one, I don't know what the configuration is. So give that teacher the ability to stop the direct Wi-Fi network in their classroom. Now, there will be some periphery Wi-Fi, but then the radiation goes down significantly with the distance that you are away from the router. So we would, we would suggest to, have that teacher be able to figure out a way to turn that router, that Wi-Fi off in that classroom, and then turn it back on when they need it.
So, sorry, if I can just clarify, you're asking for, is it like each classroom to have a different router, then?
I believe each classroom does have a different router. Configurations I've seen have been actually four routers per, up to four routers per classroom. So, so you may have a same Wi-Fi system, but it would be, each router is, is, and Ellen would know this a lot better than I do, but I believe there certainly isn't one big, humongous router for the school. It's in, they are in each classroom. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Anthony?
Thank you very much for telling, Mr. Clegg. Can you tell me what the mission and mandate of CE4ST is outside of school Wi-Fi? What other issues are you campaigning for or against?
Well, we are, we are, our, our mission is, is what I said, to educate Canadians, and that involves whether it's Wi-Fi, smart meters were involved. Okay, it, it depends on what part of Canada you're in, what your interests are. So in B.C. right now, there's a significant amount of effort as they're rolling out smart meters. Quebec, the same thing, as Hydro-Quebec is rolling out smart meters. So we're involved, and we have two board members that are involved in educating citizens in Quebec to know that you can actually opt out of a smart meter and have a non-communicating meter. We've been involved in Ontario, actually across the country, in probably about four dozen different cell tower situations, where we've been successful in getting a proponent to actually move the cell tower away from a crowded residential community, or a school ground, or a play area, to an area that's not quite as, as populous. So, so our overall goal, as I said, is to, is to, is to work with all levels of government, primarily Health Canada changed to be Safety Code Six. And then as we get at requests, whether it's cell tower requests, smart meter requests, or Wi-Fi in school requests, then we would, we would react to the requests as, as they come in from, from Canadians across the country.
Any other questions? I have a couple myself. As far as, I know this is all hypothetical right now, but turning the, the Wi-Fi router on and off in a classroom, would there not be great costs incurred with that?
I, I don't, I actually, I don't know. Our, what, what we did is, we chose that as one of the solutions, because that's what the Elementary Teachers Federation had asked, and so we felt that that was, that was a good idea, to give the teacher some control. And my understanding of that was driven by a handful of teachers who are electro-sensitive, so they, they are actually showing symptoms, that they, they are having trouble working in that classroom environment because of the reaction. So I, I don't know about the cost. As I say, though, I do know, based on my experience in the industry, that if, if you went back as a board and said, hey, we'd like to figure out a cost-efficient way to do that, I, I, I think industry would work with you.
Thank you. And have you delegated to any other boards?
Yes, we've delegated to Waterloo Board last fall, and we have not really, and I personally have delegated to that. I know we've had people delegate to the Peel Board, to the Board in Peterborough, I'm trying to remember the proper name, I think it's Coorthas, Coorthas Secondary or something? Is that right? Thank you. And, and those are the two that I'm aware of. And I was not, we were not, CE4ST was not involved in the B.C. situation, they were done before CE4ST was created.
And last, are you aware of any of the boards that you presented, presented to changing their Wi-Fi procedure?
Not yet. It, it takes time.
Thank you. So, our trustees can decide on this matter this evening. We can receive it as information only. We can refer the matter to a future meeting, or we can request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting. Someone like to speak to that? Arlene?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to see a staff report brought back to the board.
All in favor? So the staff will be preparing a, a report, response to your comments, and I'm sure that will be available in the new year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas to you too. Thank you.
Moving on to 8.2, 2014-15 revised budget estimate. Mr. Paul McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the benefit of the new trustees, and perhaps a refresher for our existing ones, this is the second financial reporting cycle for the 14-15 year. The first one is the budget estimates, which were approved by the board in June. This is the second one. We have a, a third one, which is called the March or Seven Month Report, which basically is a, a mini-year end, which corresponds to the government year end. Their year end is March 31st, ours is August 31st. We have to do some interim reporting to them. And then we do our year end, which happens in next fall. For the 14-15 year end will happen between September and November of, of 2015. The, the revised budget before you, if I can draw your attention to the chart on page 33 of your agenda, which is, I guess, the page two of six of the report, the, the, there's actually a $200,000 improvement over our accumulated surplus deficit projected for the 14-15 year end, over the original budget estimates from 1.5 million to 1.7 million. We now begin our monthly reporting to the board on, on our, our financial sta-, our budget, sorry, every month. And that's referred to in item seven, which is on page 36 or five of your report. And each month, what we do is compare the amounts of revenue received and expenditures to, to the, the overall budget, to make sure they're in line with what we would expect based, based on a percentage, and also based on trends from prior years. So the motion before you is to approve the revised budget in the amount indicated. And myself, or Roxana, Roxana would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Questions? Diane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent McMahon, does the possibility of staffing increases factor into this?
Through you, Madam Chair, it does. There are staffing increases included in the revised budget to, to, A, take into account additional enrollment that has happened in the schools. The, if you look at the enrollment page, which is, or appendix, it is, sorry, I've got to scroll over. It's actually page 42. Our ADE, our Average Daily Enrollment, which drives both our funding and our staffing, is actually up almost 300 over what we expected. So there is additional staffing to address the, the increased students. And we also have two other staffing adjustments that are indicated on page, on appendix D3, which is page 46 in your agenda, and at a cost of $90,000.
Thank you.
Seeing none, they have a mover to resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the 2014-15 revised budget estimates in the amount of 353,004, no, no, 353,448,564 dollars. Do you have a mover? Mark? Seconder? Arlene? All in favor? Trustee Marai, reporting to Parents Policy 2-05.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just would like to present to the board, Policy 2-05, reporting to parents, parent interviews, which was discussed at the policy, most recent policy meeting, for the consideration of the board.
Any questions? Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board appoint the nominees listed in the, no, sorry, wrong, sorry. So any questions? On the policy. Sorry, Helena.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just noticing that there are a lot of ways that parents can communicate. One thing I noticed was that email wasn't mentioned, and it's, they talk about phone calls, interviews, checklists, informal reports. I'm wondering if there's a reason to that, or if that's a routine way of communicating? We could add emails to the-
Superintendent Cipriano, do you want to speak to that? Please?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. Through, to you, trustee Carabella. This, we, we tried to outline the most common forms of communication, because it is about parent, parent interviews and reporting to parents. The most common form being face-to-face telephone calls. I do know that in practice, some schools do practice, some teachers do have an email communication practice with parents as well.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Thank you. Other questions? So resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve Policy 2.05, reporting to parents. May I have a mover? Trustee Quinn, seconded. Trustee Rabenda, all in favor? Move. Thank you. Moving on to 8.4, the Special Education Advisory Council membership, 2014 to 18. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the trustees. Our SEAC membership follows the cycle of the municipal elections, so when the elections came, as of December, SEAC was disbanded, and we have a, a new SEAC that is appointed, come for a four-year term that is similar to the municipal election term. So that is, that is why we're bringing forward, for your consideration, the recommendation to appoint members of SEAC. The Special Education Advisory Committee consists of representatives of local associations, and are nominated by the association and appointed by the board. Associations have provided supporting letters attesting that the nominees that you see before you do meet the required qualifications. So we have representatives from Autism Ontario, Easter Seals, Halton Down Syndrome Association, the Voice for Hearing Impaired Children, the Association for Bright Children of Ontario, Learning Disabilities Association of Halton, and two members at large. And we ask that the trustees consider the resolving, appointing the nominees listed in the report to the Special Education Advisory Committee for a term of four years.
Any questions? Moved by trustee Marai, seconded. Trustee Danko, all in favor? So move. 8.5, Core French Resource Selection, and that will be Superintendent Miguel Acudie.
Through you, Madam Chair. Subsequent to a prior information report, and on behalf of my colleague, Jack Negro, presented for action is the Core French Resource Selection for Grade Five. The digital resource Echoes Pro has undergone extensive piloting in our system. It is currently in use by all Grade Four French, Core French teachers. It aligns with the revised Ontario French Curriculum Document, the Ontario Catholic Graduate Expectations, and is fully Trillium-approved. The recommendation of the Curriculum Department is to purchase Echoes Pro Level Two as the approved Grade Five Core French digital resource to ensure continuity of programming in the junior grades.
Any questions? Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. What is the current Grade Five resource, and what is the need for the upgrade?
I don't know what the Grade Five resource is, as I'm presenting this report for Jack. The reason to, to change it is because we are replacing paper resources with digital resources, and this is the, the same technology and the same program as is currently being used in Grade Four, and all the technology that would be required to, for students in Grade Five to utilize it is already purchased.
Any other questions? I'd like a mover that we approve the purchase of the Grade Five Core French digital resource. Moved by trustee Marai, seconded by trustee Rowe, all in favor? So move. Secondary college chemistry textbook selection, Superintendent Miguel Acudie.
Through you, Madam Chair. Subsequent to a prior information report, presented for action is the College Chemistry Resource Selection for Grade Twelve. The digital resource Chemistry Twelve College Preparation aligns with the current chemistry curriculum and the Ontario Catholic Graduate Expectations. It has received the endorsement of Science Department heads at the September Subject Council meeting. The recommendation of the Curriculum Department is to purchase the digital resource Chemistry Twelve College Preparation.
Any questions? Could we have a mover, please, that we purchase this textbook selection for college chemistry? Trustee Danko, seconded. Trustee Quinn, all in favor? So moved. On to staff reports, 9.1, Oakville Program and Accommodation Review, Director Dawson.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. At the November 18th regular meeting of the board, the trustees approved the resolution number 147/14, that the director prepare a staff report regarding the review of current program and people accommodations in Oakville schools. And as you know, Halton Catholic is a leader in the province in student achievement and wellbeing, and because of this, our parents are very interested in the types of programs that we offer our students to achieve these ends. And parents desire a full range of programs to be available at their local schools. While this is desirable, it's not always feasible, because there's a number of factors to be considered, namely, the space in the school and student enrollment to support school programs. To expand or to reduce any academic programs in Oakville Elementary or Secondary Schools, we need to do a complete review of existing programs, look at enrollment trends, school accommodations, in order to be aligned with the, the board's long-term accommodation plan, and similar function as we are about to embark on with our Burlington Elementary and Secondary Schools. So senior staff recommends the following five items that need to be in, included and completed to address program and accommodation needs in Oakville. That a complete review of elementary and secondary school programs- That, a complete review of elementary and secondary school program offerings in Oakville by the Board to identify any potential efficiencies in program delivery or gaps in program offerings. To update our elementary and secondary school enrollment forecasts for Oakville. Review and amend the Board's school closure and consolidation policies and procedures following the release of the newly amended Part Three, People Accommodation Review Guidelines expected or anticipated shortly. Commence elementary and secondary school accommodation reviews for all Oakville schools and engage professional consultants to help complete the review of school programs. If required, facility renewal and school accommodation process for Oakville Elementary and Secondary Schools. Previously, Superintendent Corbaccio, at our October seventh meeting, brought forward the School Consolidation Capital Program Projects outlined in memorandum of two thousand and fourteen BOH. And it talks about a funding opportunity to address the changing accommodation needs across our Board's declining or aging areas. So I put forward before the Board tonight that staff recommends implementation of the five steps noted above and be undertaken for all schools in Oakville so we can take advantage of that ministry capital projects program funding. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. Director? Yes, trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the, to the Treasurer. What would be the proposed budget for those professional consultants mentioned in point five?
Superintendent Corbaccio?
Through you, Madam Chair. At this point, we're unaware what those costs will be. It'll, it'll be dictated by the scope of what works and all. But all that typically will come back to the Board unless it's within our operating budget, then we'll handle it within our own budgets.
So to clarify, if, if it's beyond the scope of current budgets, then you would have to come back to us for approval? Because right now, we're, we're giving you a recommendation to engage professional consultants, and it doesn't mention coming back to the Board to ask for approval therein.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify that point, we do have some flexibility within our, within our operating budget to do some of this work. But I, I, I believe that it's only very preliminary. We won't be expensing a lot of money for some of it. When it becomes a full-fledged project, it'll come back to the Board and all the costs we brought in. It's only a preliminary scoping of the work at this point that's anticipated, only to assist staff in doing it, because we're doing all of Burlington and all of Oakville. So it can be quite, quite a task to do that. So depending on what our resources are. But at this point, we're not anticipating a large expenditure, but we're just bringing it to trustee's attention that it could be a requirement to spend some operating budget on this project. Thank you.
Answer your question? Any other questions? Seeing none? Staff report, no, information items.
Excuse me. Could I make a motion that we pursue this? I'd like to make...
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may, Madam Chair, that trustees ask senior staff to pursue the recommended next steps as indicated in this report.
Trustee Intnasi, all in favor? Now, information items, we have a student trustee update. Who's going to be doing that? Chloe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Um, so the biggest thing that I have to report tonight is that on Monday, I was down in Toronto to visit Irwin Eldon, who is the provincial advocate for youth and children. So I was there with seven other student, student trustees from across the province. So the main kind of focus of the meeting was talking about how we can partnership with AUSA, which is a student trustee, student trustee, Ontario Student Trustee Association, to kind of help bring forth the voices of those who they advocate for. So they tend to be, they're kind of like their main, the main kind of groups of children that they advocate for are children who are in the system, so with Child Aid Services, children who are in jail, native children, and then children of special needs. Gifted students also fall under that umbrella of kids with special needs. So we spent a good kind of two hours talking about what we can do to kind of elevate their voice and to bring their voice to the ministry so that certain programs can be in place in schools to help them and to kind of better, and cater their needs in the school. So it was definitely a great experience. And then we also kind of talked about the idea of, okay, how can we bring this back to our Boards? And how can we also implement this in our classrooms? Because being in a Catholic Board, we also, we talk about inclusion, we talk about loving our brothers and sisters. And I definitely remember in Grade Nine and Ten Religion classes, we talked a lot about how we can have a voice for those who society tends to abandon and those who aren't, their lives aren't viewed as valuable. So it was definitely an interesting idea to kind of bring back into religion classes and to kind of see how we can maybe make like a project out of this or culminating out of this so that their voices are being heard and that students understand that the kid who was beside you who's maybe struggling in class does have the same voice as you, even though they may be a bit different from you, or they may not process their thoughts the same way as you. So that was definitely great. And hopefully, within the next couple of months, years, or however long our timeframe is, we can kind of bring that back into our Board and ultimately into our classrooms. And then obviously, last week, we had our last Student Senate meeting for the year. So we talked about kind of bringing expans, bringing submissions and expanding our submissions for the CBC, which is the Catholic Board Council of Ontario. They're doing a magazine called Keeping the Flame Alive. So we were talking about how we can bring in expansions, bring it to our secondary and elementary schools. Right now, due to time constraints, it's going to be kind of a bit hard, seeing as submission, the submission deadline is beginning of January. So it's most likely going to be Student Senate members who are putting forth submissions. So basically, the magazine is just kind of highlighting Catholic faith and education in the Board and across the province as well. And then also, we brainstorm new initiatives that we can implement in the new year. So that is all that I have to report to you.
That's a lot. Well done. Any comments or questions? No? That's great, Chloe. Thank you. Educational Field Trips, Superintendent Cipriano?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I present the eleven school educational field trips that have been approved by senior staff for both our elementary and secondary schools over the next several months. They're here for your information. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Carabella?
Through you, Madam Chair. I was just intrigued by the Algonquin trip and noticing that it happens over the weekend, from Saturday to a Wednesday, and being out in the bush and stuff. Are accommodations made for the students to be able to attend Mass? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I, I'm certain, although they may not, they may not attend Mass, they do have liturgy. They do have liturgy with staff at those events when they do take place, obviously, not near a church, but students are out at, at an educational experience over the weekend, over Sunday.
If I may comment, like, my son went on it last year, I think Jake Overholt went too, and I can attest that Mr. Waugh does the liturgy. Okay, moving on to Capital Projects Report, as of November thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. I just saw Roxanne. No, it's over there. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like the revised budget report, these are monthly reports now that we will bring forward to trustees. This, the report reflects all of our capital projects dating back to nineteen ninety-eight, when the new funding model came in. Just to come back to a question by trustee Quinn earlier, if the projects that are identified under the consolidation, closure, or people accommodation review come forward, they would show up on this report, too. The budget would be approved by the Board, and then they would show up on this report, including all spendings related to them. So that, this is the vehicle they would come forward. So the report basically, excuse me, shows for the active projects, an individual sheet. There's a summary at the beginning, and then for the active projects, an individual page where there's still purchase orders against the project, excuse me. And then at the end, we show our education development charges, expenditures, and our, our debenture, our debenture schedule, too. So myself or Roxanne would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Questions? None? Moving on to the biggie, broader public sector procurement directive training. Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back in October, as the background of the report indicates, we brought forward an update on the broader public sector procurement directive. And we're going to do a presentation for you through our purchasing manager, Craig Harling, tonight. This is a requirement of the Ministry of Education that all staff, including trustees, be trained in the broader public sector procurement directive. Just a quick background, our purchasing policy and procedures are compliant with the directive. The training is about informing and helping people who are involved in purchasing understand it better and, and what it means. And so I'll turn it over to Craig. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, trustees, and superintendents. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight. I really appreciate your time. As Superintendent McMahon said, the broader public sector procurement directive has been mandated and been issued by the Ministry of Finance. And in their initiative, they have also directed us to do the e-learning training modules. This was created with a committee that was chaired by the Ministry of Finance, Ministry of Education, sorry, with a lot of input from different levels of the school boards. This is just an orientation, this is not your training. So this will just allow you to have a peek at what you're up to. Why does procurement training matter? It's a responsible management of public funds. It's the law. The Auditor General of Ontario assumes school boards' compliance with the BPS Procurement Directive. And the Halton Catholic District School Board is required to attest to the compliance requirements. Roles and Responsibility, who is accountable? Whether you're a trustee, director of education, superintendent, supervisory officer, principal, vice principal, secretary or clerk, teacher, operational or business staff, parent or student council member or other Board staff, you need to understand your role and responsibilities in procurement activities and/or decisions based on the BPS Procurement Directive. Everyone that has procurement of any type, whether they use a P-card, whether they use the BAS system, if they are spending Board money or school-generated funds, they need to have taken this training to allow them to understand their accountability and their role. It's been broken into four different streams. The streams are, the stakeholders are trustees, director of education, senior business officials, and other school board and school-level staff and stakeholders. We have, there's governance, there is operational, there is school administration, and then there is parent council, teachers, and student council. So it's been broken into those four groups and created to address those four different levels of how people would participate in purchasing. The BPS Procurement Directive was issued by the Province of Ontario. It provides the consistent procurement practices for BPS organizations. The Halton Catholic District School Board must meet the following requirements. Develop a supply chain code of ethics. Ensure the procurement policies and procedures are in place and adhere to the twenty-five mandatory requirements of the directive. This was done in April of two thousand and eleven. We looked at the purchasing administrative procedures. We looked at the new directive, at the twenty-five mandatory, and we adjusted as required. We have a supply chain code of ethics, it's in our purchasing administrative procedures. And we have all of the twenty-five mandatory requirements of the directive in our procedures. The current status for HCDFB is in compliance with twenty-five as a twenty-five mandatory. The Board staff have identified gaps in the following areas. This is basically a living document. So we will constantly be looking at how we should move forward, how we're going to approve or improve what we're doing. The things that we've looked at under the requirement category is, we are doing obviously competitive procurement all the time. What we are starting to do, and we have started to do, is supplier qualification. We're looking at four different areas of contractors to pre-qualify them. We've already done plumbing, we're in the process of doing electricians. We're looking at mechanical, and we're, and we're looking at HVAC. So this process gives us the ability to have staff have a list of pre-qualified contractors. These are people that we've gone out for a competitive bid and asked them to come back with all of their qualifications. And we've evaluated their qualifications, their insurance levels, WSIB, the qualifications required to do their specific service. And then we create a list of pre-approved vendors that staff have the ability to go to every time they require work to be done. Anything over fifty thousand dollars obviously is going to be a competitive, open competitive bid, request for proposal, tender, et cetera. So anything up to the fifty thousand, we're going to give them a pre-qualified list of who they can use and get forward, moving forward with their job. We're also working at contract extensions. We've been putting a lot of contracts in place over the last four or five years, and some of them are coming up with contracts, are, they're finished. And we either have to look at, is it, are we able to look at an extension? Is it, is it possible, or is it required? Is there a timing factor involved? What are we needing to do or look at? Or if we're looking at, at the end of the contract, are we looking at vendor performance? Making sure that the vendor did everything was required in the contract? Would they be able to actually bid again? Were they compliant with everything that we asked them to do? So this vendor performance is kind of twofold. It's, now we want to put a, a written process in place where the, the end users, the Board employees that have used these vendors, have to report on, were they satisfactory? Were they compliant? Did they do everything they were supposed to do on time, within budget? All of the qualifications and the, the ability to complete the job as we require is there. If it isn't, that's one road we would go down. If it, if they're compliant and everything worked well, then we would go down a different road, which would allow them to re-quote on the next bid coming forward. The implementation timelines for the competitive procurement for supplier qualification is April of two thousand and fifteen. So we are, we've done one and a half. We're looking at two and a half to complete by April for those four services that we're looking at. And for the contract award and extensions and vendor performance, we're looking for February two fifteen. Supports for Compliance, to reach full compliance, the school board officials from across Ontario identified the following key supports. Increased awareness of the Accountability Act and the BPS Procurement Directive. And consistent training across the Boards to help staff and stakeholders understand their roles and associated responsibilities relating to the procurement activities. As of April two thousand and eleven, all school boards were required to be in compliance with the BPS Procurement Directive. The training we are launching will promote the effective, responsible, and value-for-money procurement and support compliance with the directive across our Board. The new procurement training modules in two twelve, the BPS Procurement Directive Working Committee was established. It was chaired by the Ministry of Education and with representations from school boards, including directors, senior business officials, procurement, finance, operations, transportation, construction and maintenance, information technology, human resources, and internal audit staff. We were quite a large committee. We met quite often. I would say we probably met between ten to twelve times a year. And we were in force for about two years to do this. With support from the Ontario Association of the School Board Business Officials, OASBO, the committee collaborated and developed a procurement training modules to help with the school boards. Understand their collective roles and responsibilities in procurement activities and/or decisions. Maximize the value that school boards receive from the use of public funds. Help manage procurement risks and comply with the BPS Procurement Directive. New procurement training modules. The training modules were introduced today should help you answer the following key questions. Why is the BPS Procurement Directive important? And why do school boards have to follow it? Who's responsible for procurement decisions, which would be the segregation of duties and... and approval authority schedule, AAS? And what's my role? And what's the procurement thresholds for goods and services? And what is the difference between a competitive procurement and a non-competitive procurement? Which, when can each method be used? The training packages contain six modules. Every one of the four streams has the same six modules. So if you're in operations, you have six modules covered. If you're in governance, you still have six modules, the same topics are there. What content is user-friendly? It's bilingual, it's accessibility for Ontarians with disabilities, it's AODA compliant, and the content is customized into the four different user groups. The features of the training modules, they have illustrative case studies. They're very interesting, but that's because it's my field. I quite enjoy the case studies because it gives us different perspectives. People bring in different comments and different ideas and different viewpoints. So it's very interesting to see how the end-user would think or view something, whereas maybe a superintendent would not look at it the same way. We also have eight procurement checklists and a glossary of common terms. So there's the ability, when you see the, I'll show you a couple of screens, the ability to move in and out of where you are is very simple. You can, it's very user-friendly. You just click on the things on the bottom, you can see your glossary. If you don't understand a term they're using, you can go straight in there and it will explain to you what it is. You can also go into this process and not complete it the first time. Go in and do as much as you have time to do. You can stop it and you can go back in at that point and continue on to where you are. The system will not show you as completed until you finish it. Now here's some of the screenshots. You'll be able to click on any of these and it will start your process. Governance and senior leadership. You will only be seeing governance and senior leadership. You won't be seeing all of the other, the other three streams. What you'll see on your computer will be this. You'll see the different ones that they've, they're just showing you as these are the ones that you can look at and go into and what you're responsible to complete. Operations is the largest because there are so many different aspects of operations to the board. It was, I'd say, well into two hours to do it. Yours is roughly, thank you. Yours, I know. Yes. Actually, Paul has done the operations and he's still going to have to do the governance and leadership because it's a different module. Sorry. But after doing operations, you're going to just know all the answers. Your module will be roughly 50 to 60 minutes, depending on how quickly you move through the process. It's not as bad as it sounds, honest. This is AODA compliant. Again, there is our avatar lady, and she speaks through it. It's audio, it's visual, it's everything that is required to process it. Key features of the module, it's bilingual. There is the glossary, as I mentioned before. It's very user-friendly. Case studies, very interesting. And these are real-life case studies, not necessarily from our board, but they have happened throughout Ontario. So it has been a situation, and it obviously has been resolved over the years, but there were case studies that were put in not by procurement. Okay? Just saying so. Procurement checklist, eight detailed procurement checklists are included. They're fairly extensive. If you're very interested, they will give you a lot of knowledge in procurement. And these are three people that can help you at any time in purchasing. That would be myself, my procurement officer, Dan DeKelsick, and Rosemary Manning, purchasing clerk.
Thank you for your enthusiasm, Rosemary. And, I mean, I'm sorry. And Paul, I just asked Paul, I'm sorry, how, if it was 50 minutes per module, and he said no?
No, and in the report, it's 50 minute for the whole six modules, right, for this group. So we mentioned that, Madam Chair, on, sorry, it's page 85 on your agenda, page two of the report, the paragraph below the chart. So I understand through Rob, Tanner, Craig, that a few trustees have completed this training already. So good, good for them. Thank you. And we mentioned there that if trustees wanted to consider scheduling a group session for the rest, we could arrange that through the director's office for those that haven't done it. So that was the suggestion there, Madam Chair.
Questions? Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one question on, it was slide 92. And you talked about the pre-qualified suppliers. I'm wondering what our current minimum number of pre-qualified suppliers is for each trades?
There are, the only ones that we've done so far is travel and tourism. And we have 13 pre-qualified vendors that the schools are allowed to use for trips, for international trips and North American trips. As we move forward, there are no other pre-qualified vendors. That's why we're moving forward with different services. So we will get a roster of pre-qualified vendors for, we're specifically starting with facilities because we have such a large spend on those contracts that we want to help them with having a pre-qualified list of vendors that have already been vetted and evaluated.
But do we have a minimum number that we must have before, if we have two pre-qualified or one pre-qualified, that becomes a sole source again? So that's my concern was, what's our minimum number of pre-qualified?
At this point in time, we've had discussions that we would prefer to see four to five vendors so that we have a list of a number of people. So if the first two vendors are busy and can't help you, if there's an emergency in one of the schools, we need enough to sit there. And we will be able to more than fulfill that with the services we're looking at.
And to also find the competitive process?
Yes, yes. But what, the pre-qualification doesn't pre-qualify them on price. It pre-qualifies them on their qualifications, how they do their job, and their insurance and everything else. Their pricing is done after the fact.
Right. But the point of having pre-qualified is so that we can have a competitive bid process?
Yes. And it can be a process of quotations, depending on their dollar threshold.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. When would you like us to complete this?
You have, on the, I don't know what page it is in yours, but on my second page, we're looking for governance. We'd really like you to be done by July 31st. January, sorry. I was hoping for July, sorry. Sorry, it is January 31st, 2015.
It's in the chart that I just referenced on page 85 in your, in your package.
So that's the requirement, that do it sooner rather than later?
If you can, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
For your ministry enrollment projections, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the third year we brought forward this report to the board for information. Pardon me. So we're, the trustees are aware of our enrollment trends, both past, present, and future. I would draw your, there's a lot of information in the report. I would draw your attention to appendix B1, I believe it is. Sorry, I'm going to get to it myself. It's a chart showing the enrollment numbers, five-year history, sorry, and it's 123 in the package. Thank you. Let me just get down to it. Yeah, 120, 122, 123, I guess it shows up on mine, too, yeah. So basically what that chart does is it shows the enrollment, the enrollments for the past five years, and these are as of October 31st. And then the project, the four-year projections, which we had to submit to the ministry. And then we take it out an additional 11 years. So there's actually a 15-year projected forecast term, if you will. So if you look at the bottom, you can see that we're one of the probably handful of boards in the province who are actually a growth board. Our enrollments are growing. If you look at the 540, 487, 702, and 690 at the bottom, we're growing each year. And we're in the fortunate position to, it's a fortunate position to be in. So the report is for information and reference, Madam Chair. It will form the starting point for future school boundary reviews that are done, as well as school, school accommodation reviews that have been referenced early tonight for Oakville and previously for Burlington. And myself or Frederick Thibault, our administrator of Planning Services, Fred, give away there for the new trustees, so they know who he is. Thank you. Would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Does the five-year forecast take into account just projected population growth? Or is the, the growth or decline of actually, of actual Roman Catholics taken into account? Or is it just based on pure population growth numbers?
I'm going to let Frederick respond to that. Fred?
Through you, Madam Chair. It does not take into account directly the decline in Roman Catholic populations within the region. However, what it does do is it takes a look at current trends as to what's going on within our existing communities, as well as all the new development that's occurring within the region of Halton. We take that and those trends and we move it forward in the next five years. That is definitely something we're looking into to better increase the accuracy of our projections right now. What we do do as well is look at some of the yield analysis that's been going on, especially within the new developments, to see exactly how much student population we're actually retrieving from the new development growth. So from there, we can say that, you know, one new residential unit, we typically get, typically get maybe .1 students. So those take into account some of the trends, such as the demographics that are present within the region. So directly, we're not looking at the statistics themselves, but they are accounted for within past trends.
May I follow up on that, please? So if a district like Milton is growing, but not with students who'll be entering Roman Catholic elementary schools, how can we trace that other than past? Because the past isn't going to be indicative of what's happening with immigration to Canada or, or growth patterns in our, in our country. So how do we, how do we forecast what our, our construction needs will be for Catholic schools specifically and not just based on general population?
Through you, Madam Chair. Again, what we're doing on a yearly basis is we're reassessing the yields. So we're not looking too far back in order to develop these trends. So we, in updating them on a yearly basis, we are still within a pretty close margin. Now, the thing with a lot of these projections is that they're typically only good for the next five years. Anything further than that, you can get significant trend difference, differences that occur. So that's why the ministry, as well as ourselves, base ourselves mostly on the next five years. But like to answer your question, in reassessing those yields on a yearly basis, we come closer to that, we close the margin of error.
Madam Chair, if I may, by yield, what Frederick means, too, is out of a general develop, or one development area, what percentage students would come to our board versus go to the, the other three boards in our, in our jurisdiction? The two French boards are the, are the English public board. So that's a planning term, so that's what he means by that.
Frederick, does this take into account projects that might be slated through the cities for, for building, like builders coming in? Arlene was speaking about it earlier this evening, and it just piqued my interest. New developments.
Yes, it does take into account new developments. So that's essentially what we do. We receive municipal applications from all four municipalities within Halton. We assess those and we, we assess as to how far out they're going to begin developments. And then once they begin development, that's when we apply the development yields that we were discussing earlier, to see how many kids we're going to be receiving on a year-one house, a year-two house, up to 15 years. So we are taking into account all municipal growth in our projections.
Just to further, like if that does, if you don't have the municipal application, if there's like three in the, in the papers being spoken about or, or not in the papers, like that isn't taken into account, obviously? If you don't have it?
Just to clarify, the municipality directly circulates to us every planning application that is brought forward to the city. And they update us on a continual basis as to what that progress is. We also track that progress and update our projections based on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you to Superintendent McMahon. You said that, I believe, growth is a good thing. Now tell me, can you please explain to me why it's the view of the board that growth is a good thing? And if, if we are growing for the sake of growth, what, what is the vision there versus providing the best services to the Catholic students or the, in the, in the public high school, even the, in the high schools, to, to all students who want to join our schools?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Quinn. What I was referring to, growth, I was more, speaking more from a financial perspective. If you're declining enrollment board, you get declining enrollment grants, but those do not bring you back up to where you would be if you were a growth board. So I was speaking, speaking more from a financial perspective on that in terms of, you know, the, our overall grant structure. If, if we were declining, the ministry gives a grant to try, to bring you partway back up to where you were, but not fully.
Just to follow up then, so the ministry has incentives for us to continue to grow?
To that extent, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Moving on. Outcome monitoring report, which you have at your spot. Superintendent Miguel Acuddy.
Through you, Madam Chair. Presented for information is the outcome monitoring report on elementary secondary, to secondary school retention. This report provides an update on student retention from grade eight to grade nine, as well as new admissions to grade nine from outside the board. Over the past three years, grade eight to grade nine retention has remained above 86%. During that same period, overall, grade nine enrollment has increased despite a decline in grade eight graduates. This means that our grade nine cohorts include an increased percentage of students from outside the board. And the community where this pattern is strongest is Milton. The outcome monitoring report outlines in more detail the strategies, programs, and initiatives underway to promote and sustain faith-based, welcoming school environments that honor all pathways, support student safety and well-being, and are attentive to student voice. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the work of both elementary and secondary school staff to promote connections between panels and foster a sense of belonging among families of schools in order to support students in a successful transition to high school. Myself and Dr. Van Rusmelin welcome questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your report. Any questions? Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. One anecdotal note that I had heard in my community was the, the difference in the EQAO marking scheme between the Halton Catholic and the Halton Public Boards. And the higher marks achieved in EQAO in certain high schools based on their marking scheme, followed by parents wanting to send their kids to the schools that have higher EQAO results. I'm wondering if any of that anecdotal evidence presented to me holds us any water? Thank you.
Can you speak to that? Colin?
I would only comment to say that EQAO is marked the same at any school that you attend, which is to say that it's marked outside of the school systems. I think they may have been referring to the aggregate scores of the individual schools. And without getting into too much detail about the differences in terms of how special education students are directed in our board to the other board, we have what I would call comprehensive schools, i.e. we don't have individual schools where large special education populations are directed to, as our co-terminus board is inclined to do. So if, if you were to look at the individual EQAO aggregate results in the public board schools in your community, you would see that- schools in your community, you would see that there would be one school in particular that would be lower than all of the rest as a result of their policy. We have a, a policy of inclusion, and we think students should go to school in their home schools. And so, those students are evenly distributed across our, our school populations. And that may be contributing to that perception. But the aggregate score for our board as a whole is actually higher than that of our co-terminus board.
If I may follow up then, I think I mean more the, the weight of the mark given to the student on their, their year-end mark versus between the two boards. So, that, for example, if at a public high school, your final mark was worth 15% of your EQAO mark, in our school, it would be worth, in our board is worth less, therefore the students are putting in a higher effort at the public school because it's worth more of their final mark. And that leads to higher marks in, in the, in the area.
I'm not privy to the, the amount that the public board asks their teachers to include in the final mark. And I think you're referring to the grade nine EQAO math score, because I don't think the OSSLT, the literacy one in grade 10, is involved in this. It is the policy of this board that that grade in grade nine OSSLT will contribute to 5% of the students' overall mark in grade nine math, both at the applied and academic levels. And that's a decision that's been reached in the curriculum department through consultation with the subject council. And we have not had any, that I am aware of, dialogue with our co-terminus board about what percentage they may use.
I think that is precisely what I was talking about. So, thank you for clearing that, clarifying that for me. But now, if, if we're finding an 86% retention rate between grades eight and nine, could that difference between the two boards be leading to that number of change?
Can you answer that question?
I, I, I don't see the correlation that you're asking me to observe. But I, what I would, what I would observe is that we actually gain more students from the public board schools than we lose to them. So, I, I would ask for further clarification as to what it is that you are asking.
Of the Catholic school, elementary students in my neighborhood are opting to attend Iroquois Ridge High School based on their school's EQAO numbers. And that seems to be related, related to me because of the higher numbers presented in that, that math score.
I think you're probably referring to St. Marguerite, Deauville. And our experience has been that schools like St. Marguerite, St. Vincent, and St. Raphael, which are in very close proximity to public schools, tend to have a lower retention rate than other schools do. I am not aware of the direct correlation with relative EQAO scores between individual schools. And so, I can't really comment on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll through you to Colin. I'm, I'm just wondering, now, we are, I understand we are, it looks, we're pretty consistent, we're losing 13 some odd percent of our grade eight. But the question is, in the incoming, are they predominantly Catholic or are they non-Catholic? I mean, it's great that we're growing, and I like to see that, you know, they think highly enough of us to come over. But I'm just wondering if you know what the ratios are?
Through you, Madam Chair. I am not aware that we request from incoming students from outside of our board as to their particular denomination, outside of what they may be putting on the registration form under their own volition, or outside of whether or not they have signed a declaration for their, the direction of their tax base for the purposes of being enrolled to elect Catholic school trustees as opposed to public school ones. I, I'm not aware of our collecting that statistic, and I don't know if any of my colleagues are, but I, I am not aware of that.
Would anyone like to speak to that? We don't have those. It's open access schools, so.
So, to clarify, we, as a school board, do not know how many Catholic students are attending our Catholic high schools. Is that correct?
That's correct. Everyone's welcome. Camilla, do you want to say something?
Through you, Madam Chair. We, we do have the retention rates of our Catholic grade eight students retained in our Catholic secondary schools, and that is the 86% that Mr. Miguel quoted. What we do not have is the denomination of the non-Catholic students from our, from our Catholic elementary schools coming into our secondary schools. We don't have that information on what their denomination, faith is, of their faith is.
Sorry to follow up then. To clarify, we do not know how many baptized Catholics are in our Catholic high schools.
That might be forthcoming in January, and a package is coming with religious exemption, but the numbers aren't there. Superintendent Nar?
We would be able to collect the information on the current students who have come through our system as Catholics and know those ones for sure. What we would not be able to tell is if students have come to us from a public board, they may not have, they may be Catholic in that public board, they may not be, and we don't ask that question of those students. So, we could confirm the ones that we know that have gone through in elementary and transferred onto secondary, which is the retention rates we have. However, we could not confirm those unknowns in the secondary school because we simply can't ask, can't ask them that they, they are welcome into our schools under the open access.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to that?
Just one last comment. I just want to thank staff because I know this is very detailed, and I know it takes a lot of work. And I, I appreciate knowing that we're still coming out ahead. Thank you.
Religious AQ and Masters reimbursement, September 210 to December 2014. Superintendent Nar?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to share with you an update on the reimbursements that we do and the paying of the religion AQ for the additional qualification courses for our teachers and the master's degree level in religious education. There's three degrees, the Masters of Catholic Leadership, Masters of Religious Education, and Masters of Divinity, which are the predominant ones. Not to say that we wouldn't accept reimbursements from other universities that have different titles for their, their master's courses in, in the area of religion. So, I've included a chart for you that shows, that breaks it down over the past five years. Of course, the 14, 15 year is not complete because we're not finished the year. But that gives you an outline of the budget that is attached to it, and as well, the number of participants that have taken part in the OECTA, which is the Ontario English Catholic School Teachers Association's Part 1, 2, and 3. Just to clarify, Part 3 would give you your specialist in religious education. That's the number of teachers that are taking, have taken that over the past five years. And then, as well, the other chart on the next page is the chart that shows you over the past five years, the number of staff that have been taking the master's court level courses in religious education, and the subsequent budget that's attached with that. And I'm pleased to answer any questions that you would have.
Any questions or comments? Trustee Quinn?
You'll have to forgive me, I'm asking a lot of questions tonight, but it's my first real board meeting, so I want to get as edited as I can on these. So, through you, Madam Chair. What schools qualify to, to give these, these masters and doctoral qualifications to our board? Do we accept from any, any online school, or do we have specific ones we take from?
It's on page 145 of your agenda package.
And just to clarify, right now, currently, the school that, the degrees that, that are reflected here is from the University of St. Michael's College in Toronto, Catholic University. That's where predominantly staff are taking their master's level courses, mostly because we've got a, we have worked out with them to have a satellite campus. So, some of those courses are taking place at Corpus Christi. The school has committed to half of the courses in a 20-course degree to be done on-site. So, we're nearing the end of that period of time, but you'll see there was a bulk of people that started up in 2010. So, though, they are working on various, the three degrees that are highlighted at St. Michael's. Certainly, any of the Catholic universities that would grant a master's level degree in religious education, we would accept. St. Jerome's, for example, has the Masters of Catholic Thought. I don't believe we've had anybody enrolled in that recently, but it is certainly one that we would accept it. It's in Waterloo. And as well, certainly anybody who is taking, I don't think they're running their masters this year at King's College in Catholic Leadership, but we would certainly accept that if, if people were to come to us with that. So, university level. We haven't restricted it to that, but we haven't had any requests for that. So, it's, it's simply the, the procedure that we've outlined is on the master's level in religious education. Catholic.
Arlene?
A quick clarification, through you, Madam Chair. As I understand it, we're one of the few boards in the province that reimburse our employees for this, and, and I'm very proud to say that we do, because in my world, if, if we're allowing more funding, then we've got better qualified people in our schools. So, if somebody could maybe speak to that, that would be great, too.
I do have stats up to 2012. I don't have the past year's stats on it. But in 2012, 11 boards provided no funding for religion AQ courses or master's level. Six boards were currently, six boards were paying a portion of the Part 1 for religious education. Two boards were paying a portion for Part 1, and then a smaller portion for Part 2 and 3 in the religion AQ. Six boards were paying, I believe, the full Part 1. One board was funding Part 3. I'm not sure what that board was doing with Part 1 and 2. And three boards, like us, were funding Part 1, 2, and 3. I'm not aware of boards that are funding the master's program.
Thank you. I'd just like to comment, I think it's fabulous that you've worked it out, that we have a satellite at Corpus. Great. Any other questions, comments? Construction report, Superintendent Corbaccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have before you the, the second last report for St. Francis FDK. The pictures that were taken last week are shown there, but actually, as of today, the lockers are in, the mill works in place, and things are looking very optimistic to, to get an occupancy approval before the end of the calendar year. And if all goes well, the students will be able to move into the new classrooms in January. I'd be pleased to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions or comments? Kudos. Okay. Item 10.9 that was added to the agenda. I just would like, for your information purposes, to tell you that I'm going to be writing a letter to the Halton Regional Health Department, hopefully tomorrow. And it will say that it has come to my attention that there has been an incident at one of our schools, particularly one of my schools, that involved vaccinations. And I'm simply asking Dr. McGani, Medical Officer of Health, for a full report. Yes?
I'm wondering if you could include in that letter a reply by date, so that we can have that response for our next board meeting in the new year?
By January 6, 15, whatever would be the week before for the trustee, I mean, for the package? Friday, January 2nd? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Miscellaneous information. SEAC minutes of September 29th. Dr. Brown?
You have before you minutes from our September SEAC meeting for your information. I'm happy to answer any questions that are in.
Seeing none. CPIC minutes of November 3rd. Someone going to speak to that, or just for information? Tim?
Through you, Madam Chair. Before you is the minutes for CPIC November meeting. We happy to answer any questions in regards to the minutes.
Questions from Superintendent Overholt? Seeing none. Policy Committee minutes, November 11th. Trustee Marai?
And this is for the, the November meeting, not the last September 1st up there before you.
Any questions? Seeing none. We have some correspondence. We have the OCSTA selection process for our regional directors. I believe that Arlene can answer questions, if we have questions to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, this, this process for elections happens at the AGM in the spring. Traditionally, what's happened, because we're in the same region, is Niagara and Hamilton. If you, if no one else sort of puts their name forward, then whoever's there goes in. But right now, we are eligible, again, to have two representatives because Kathy Bertnik is the president, and she is in Niagara. So, we are still allowed two, one from Hamilton, I believe, and I guess one from, from Halton. Now, as I understand it, what they've done in the past is you, names are brought forward through nomination, and they're brought forward to the AGM. And then, the region would vote for whoever's put their names forward at that time. And both Hamilton and Niagara have, excuse me, sent in their, their information to OCSTA saying that they would like to see it stay status quo. Some boards may be electing to do their, areas to elect their representatives differently. But right now, we're one of two-thirds. So, I have told them verbally that I thought we would probably stay with the status quo, and that would just simply mean that prior to the AGM, we would take nominations, and it would go to the AGM. And then, when the voting takes place there, Hal, Hamilton, Niagara, and Halton would all be voting for whichever two people they would like to represent. So, if that seems acceptable to everyone here, then we can send a response into OCSTA.
Does anyone have any further questions? No? We also have included in our package a thank you card from Alessa Lemaie and her thoughts on the last 34 years. And we also have a thank you from Eddie and Maria Viana on the retirement evening on that very snowy night. Can we adjourn now with the prayer and then move back in camera? Okay. If we can have our resolution for absentees? None. And if we can have a closing prayer? Trustee Danko, please?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. A student's prayer. Creator of all things, true source of light and wisdom, lofty source of all being, graciously let a ray of your brilliance penetrate into the darkness of my understanding, and take from me the double darkness in which I have been born, sin and ignorance. Give me a sharp sense of understanding, retentive memory, and the ability to grasp things correctly and fundamentally. Grant me the talent of being exact in my explanations, and the ability to express myself with thoroughness and charm. Point out the beginning, direct the progress, help in the completion through Christ our Lord. St. Thomas Aquinas. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.